No, not today. Too many holes in the road.
I don't know if I'll shake your ass.
I was gonna say, is the famous word, that's not my department?
Yeah.
They told me there's some of the plumbers, there's some pretty rough ones over there.
Boy, I'm getting a... They logged on that road up on hell's goat. Didn't ask, and they tore it all to pieces. And I tried to... So, as Simpson's happened to fix it. But they cut it off, they were only gonna spend so much. It says, no you're not. You're gonna spend what it takes to fix it. So, it ain't very good.
See, our problem is if you don't have enough material on the road this time of year, you just make mud.
Yeah.
So, you just good, you gotta get that window just perfect and that's...
I've got one frosty in my driveway, starts farting leaves the county road and goes clear to my house.
Yeah. Well...
Just like blood going through it on a sponge the whole way.
On the, on the, on the rock crussy. Well, let's open the meetings first.
We've got an agenda, but should probably maybe a little bit.
Yeah. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Well, actually, they are at the top of the...
Yeah, I got them looking at it.
Yeah, they're even before a few of them, that's amazing.
Yeah.
So, that's you can throw us out before the meeting starts?
No, no, I won't do that.
Well, that ain't gonna happen.
Maybe some other day we'll go to say, yeah.
I think we can go to you guys now.
Okay.
Yeah, just right here.
Okay, okay. So, as you know, the mayor's a little under the weather, so asked us to step in. I'm not as prepared as I'd like.
You talking about the sewer?
Sewer.
He's went over that with me.
Has he? Okay. So, alls I really have is a couple of handouts and that can be it then. Because if you've got it, I think mostly what it was is...
Did you go over that with him? Or you have, haven't you?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few holes in it. I'm other than because everything hasn't been compiled and how there is...
You'll believe that.
Some of them.
So, he was gonna get the price.
That's what we do have.
So, you have the price?
For a, for a refurbished lift station. Yeah. And, and so I think what's important there is researching and, and most of our estimates are from local contractors in, in our area. And they're pretty good numbers. And so, it appears, you know, somewhere around the forty, forty-two thousand per each. There's about sixteen of them.
So, do, do we... I suggested that these guys this morning that we move ahead on one? Get moving on one? See where we are on it? We get in it, we get halfway through it, looks like we're gonna be okay? Move on to the other one?
You know, we did two lift stations here a while back and they were three times that amount.
So, this again, the word refurbished or rehabbed, you know, so the, the tanks, we get inside and sandblast and shoot them. And so, it's not brand new stuff, but it's...
You just go in there and doing what, what used to be done.
Yeah, and then a lot of innovative on, the lifts can be done this way, the rails, just kind of little local ideas that aren't over, overdone sometimes when you put out a brand new one, you know? So, we, we think we could be right around there. And we can, you know, get, get some pricing out there, more of a, like, let's go type quotes and see where we can get and come back. And see if we lock the contractor in.
Would they still be, everything would be underground yet then, wouldn't they?
It's still all underground.
Yeah. Now, is, is that a good thing or is that...
Um, it's not as good, but it's still fine.
Someone talked once about it. Building above ground.
Those prices we had before were all above ground too. A little more expensive and they're new, 'cause this, you know, totally changing the concept from below. But we've done it that way a lot, a lot of cities still have them below. This would get two pumps in like they're supposed to, you know, everything.
If you, if, if everything was in working condition, where the above ground comes in is with the new regulations confined space and gotta wear all your apparatus. I mean, there, there's a lot more rules with these where the above ground, the majority of the work is done up above. But if they're refurbished and in good shape, then you're very realm, seldom you are required to go inside, so...
They ran for about thirty years now, I would say, or thirty-seven years.
Yeah. Those other ones that you questioned were three times as much. They actually have a, a system where you can pump around. So, if you did have the issues with the, the pump station, you can actually take it offline and work on it and still...
Yeah, something can flow.
Yeah, so there's a little, I mean, they're more elaborate than what the, the current ones are. So, there's some reasoning behind the cost on the other ones or...
It is if you have the money, but if you don't...
Yeah, no, I...
Right, 'cause a doghouse above them is nice, but they're really expensive.
What's a above ground one cost?
The last time we did one, which I thought was, I did one like two years ago for you and it was right around a hundred, wasn't it, or one year?
We did...
The poll was about seventy-five thousand, but then it came out almost, yeah, almost a hundred by the time.
That one by my shop, or by, not by my shop, by Doom's shop, was way over a hundred.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's more than...
But then, Jack, I think we, we refined it a little bit and rebid it and we were somewhere in the one-twenty. But the first one you're talking about, yeah, that was...
Three hundred.
Yeah, yeah, the first two we did was over three hundred thousand.
Terrible, terrible.
Yeah.
And then, then the contractors, I don't think did their great job any?
No, they were terrible.
Yeah. I think the technology's changed enough too that I, with putting the drives in there for soft start. And so, one of the issues you have is when those pumps kick on and off, it shocks the system, so it cracks things and it wears things out. But the drives, they'll operate a lot smoother on and off. So, you can actually, will be able to fine tune a little bit more, so maybe we can, you know, just get more out of them.
Be easier on the whole system.
So, what, what do we have in that one fund? Do you know, Dean?
In our, in our?
Part of it, or the city has that?
Yeah, we don't have a fund set aside.
So, here's what I think I have.
In that reserve?
There, there's probably, I think Jim's got...
It looks like, um, about, see that twenty-five, that circle number? That's because we already took eighteen thousand out, that started in eighteen and into nineteen, so some's already been used.
On repairing that pump.
Yeah, actually, that's about the cost of three pumps. The Anderson, I don't know, I think it's the one on Willow Street. We put new pumps in there already, it's got two new drives. That one's really the only thing we, to finish after being rebuilt, is coat it and check the plumbing to see if, how it is. And then that one's refurbished. So, we did that last time.
Spencer.
Mayor and I came in here and you kinda gave us the okay to do what we needed to do, that's kinda... And so, we, we have three pumps and we're moving toward, right now we're working on Cootney Avenue, trying to get it up and run it toward it. It should be, so we're kinda doing what you suggested to do. One of the couple of things on that, on the pricing that we're not sure about, because we are trying to use local. You know, some of them aren't equipped, so, you know, you might have to go out and like the plumber would, you know, I don't know, where local plumber won't, won't even wanna do anything like that. So, so that's the kind of the fear in some of those costs. And what you suggest makes sense, you know? Maybe we're all, maybe we're way out of the ballpark. Well, once we do, we'll see.
I thought we were way out of the ballpark, another way we're losing three hundred and fifty thousand.
The sense that that's supposed to go into the fund?
Alternatives that actually are cost effective.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have any reserves set aside.
I know we don't have any, but the agreement, they get paid so month to month for them.
Yes. Mr. Beal, it's five dollars a month out of each sewer bill that the city puts into that county reserve.
The last rate increase you done, Mr. Beal, every bit of it, she's been putting into that reserve.
Okay.
And the, the sheet we gave you before sees how it accumulates. Um, as you can see, sixteen, seventeen, that fifteen thousand, sixteen, or seven, seventeen, eighteen, about nineteen thousand so far this year.
Eight thousand, it's eight thousand this year.
Yeah.
So, that's just what's gone in so far, we're only partially into the year.
Yeah. Yeah, so this one, can you show us? And basically, it's, it's around fifteen hundred a month.
Maybe around fifteen, eighteen thousand a year.
So, it takes, yeah.
Yep.
And I think the important thing there is that they are in pretty rough shape and that, you know, rate could start kinda getting some going, so...
One of the things that I don't know how this all gets worked in, but because of the shape that they're in, we've been, have to be required to use Jim, our local business, to keep them pumped out at times. And so, that's an expense that, I mean, to me, that's one of those expenses you, you don't want, but you're necessary, 'cause you can't have a...
You said you don't have a system to pump them out, huh?
No, we have a, our back truck, but it's, you know, it's more, it's, it's not large enough to even keep up sometimes, so we go back and forth. That is one of the things we would like to purchase.
Here's something about that.
To do that.
We are not in the service. We need to get these things up to standard and it needs to go to city. You know, we're not, we're not in this. And this has killed us for years, 'cause we get nothing out of it, you know? And so, it needs to be, and you can't take over a dead horse, so you, that's the... I think the county needs to get them things up to where you can live with them and then you take them over. Because I don't know, it don't even make sense, you know?
They're gonna get nothing out of it.
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue is just like anything else, you go buy a new rig. As long as you got warranty on it and it's in good shape, there's no expenditures. Once your rig gets old, you have to build it up. So, this is gonna happen again, maybe not in our generation.
Yeah, but...
But we need to come up with a plan.
We gotta be honest about this. They, they dropped, the city dropped the ball years ago on that, really bad. And, and because they always felt it wasn't theirs, and you're right, it wasn't theirs. And it deteriorated terrible. And, and it's not fair to the city to have to take them over. But you put that stuff up to snuff and you watch it like you're watching it. Now, you only have the problem we're having now. You wouldn't have it, because you'd be looking at them, you know?
No, I, I, I agree, it just, you know, you can't look in the past, 'cause I think the county and both the city were equally to blame in their own parts of the equation. But I think now we need to figure out how to do it and, and nobody likes rates to go up. I agree, I don't either, but we need to establish some rate that will keep them in the shape that they need to be in, which...
Keep enough money in reserve to make...
Yeah, so you can maintain. So, if there is a partial, if the line are starting to deteriorate, you can fix it.
They, they absolutely stopped all, all, anything that had to have a sewer system on it. That's how the county got hooked on all that, you know? And when we put them in, we put them in, we had them half done in that outfit with spoolings around. And I fired them. And I had to go to Boise and explain to them down there why I fired them and we finished it. But, you know, we were doing that because Riverdale, Meadowhurst, all the areas was done. There was no way they could build a house up there. But, 'cause they had to have a sewer system and they didn't have one. That's, they really forced us into that, you know? And so, but like you said, looking back ain't doing us a lot of good. So, there's not a grant out there anywhere, a percentage that we could get this...
We're chasing, some will continue to chase. We've got a couple add-ons, you know, that we're hoping for with our bond, you know, there's just excess things to chase. So, we'll keep chasing them for sure, yeah, and see what we can do.
Are those some of those USDA real development grants that...
Some are, you know, we, we do have a project coming up.
But you can't drag the city on that, you gotta drag the county, 'cause the county is responsible till we turn that over to the city.
Let's, let's chase them then, see, we'll chase everything we can, yeah, from the county side. But yeah, if, you know, getting the lift stations refurbished, then very little cost going to that for a while, minimal maintenance, less pumping that will save. But yeah, we can look forward on how do we, how do we schedule out a budget to get these, there's sixteen of them, get them up to snuff? That would be, find a fund and find a way and...
How were the two running out were refurbished a few years ago, are they holding up for that?
Yeah, we, we did have some issues with them right at the time. We've had a couple of their pumps go out. We, actually, there's a company that's kinda helping us out that is, I don't remember, Strong Electric, the guy at Troy or Jerry. They kinda split off and he formed his own businesses. And they're doing the same thing and they kinda been helping us. There's some of the pumps that are better than others and that's kind of what we're trying to do, is get the best pumps in there. So, we can get more. Some of pumps are only supposed to last two or three years and some are seven to ten years.
Yeah, or, it seems ridiculous.
They take about six hundred thousand?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're thinking maybe economy of scale, maybe a little less if we're doing them all, yeah. But half a million to six hundred, we could get, we can get a grant, we can get some money for that and get those all done. Then we're in a whole nother position as we move forward.
Well, let's, let's do one.
Okay.
If I agree with my two friends.
Okay.
And see where we're at. And as you get through that, about halfway through, you should have an idea of whether you're gonna be able to do it, then we can move on to another one. And in the meantime, we can be working on trying to get some help outside of that. If there's no other way, you know, it's gonna drag us down and the city too, if we had to come up with six hundred thousand. So, we, we gotta, but we gotta do something with it.
Well, one of the things that Jim could touch on that is if you do get into the other people's money, then a lot more requirements and stipulations go with it. And if they hand you that, you know, now you're out for a bit. There's a lot of things that are gonna rate increase.
Well, I think that's where we, that's where we gotta get this one done.
Can we turn those over to city if they're refurbished?
No, they won't do it. I don't think they will.
We don't want any bridges either.
No, I don't blame you. I think, I, I, we just gotta get, we gotta figure out how to do it. And that's, you know, we were over the hundreds of thousands and so that's where we, but you get six hundred thousand, you're getting...
Well, we'll go, we'll go get some local contractors, this is under the fifty grand, so we can go get some firm quotes and come back and, and tell you this is what we're locked in at.
Mr. Chairman, I move we move forward with rehabilitating one of the station.
Okay. Okay, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're back. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
As long as the work is good, this would have to be built.
Well... We're kind of in a bad situation out there.
Yeah.
You wanna go to two Dean?
Yes. We received the draft financial statement from Tony Matson. And I, I reviewed it and went over it with him. All of our numbers in there, I, I don't think will change. He said it would be going through his own company's internal review process this weekend and that we should have a final bid this afternoon. I do believe, I, I don't think anything will get changed. Like I said, we went over the numbers, we, we talked about some verbiage in there. And then he, he emailed me and I think I included this in your packet, the, the financial disclosure with the hospital that he, that the wording that he'll put in there. And I think it sounds really good. So, just wanted to let you guys know where we're at. It should be finalized this afternoon. I'll get it submitted to Zion's Bank, which is, they hired them to, for the bond bank that's their representative. And I'll get that submitted and out the door this afternoon.
Okay.
That's, that's okay with you guys?
Three. Financial update from the hospital?
Oh, she sent her, um, her report for weekend being three fifteen. They closed the week with one point five million or thirty-one days cash on hand. Counts payable was a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Payrolls this week. Payroll taxes were sixty-seven thousand. Counts receivable closed that we get by point five million or seventy-eight days. I know she's got little graphs and charts there too.
Their days cash on hand is slowly increasing.
Yeah, it is. Darkening.
Counts receivable's up a little bit, but that's maybe because they, them more business.
And I think, I think they're starting, starting to turn on the goof that they did, so... Number four?
Um, number four is just there. They, they submitted their agenda for March twenty-eighth. They made it seven fifteen a.m., I think I forwarded that to Phil and...
What day is it?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. I can go.
Okay. And then their board packet.
Okay. Five.
Let's see, we had discussed, um, having county representatives for the restoration plan. Corning Basin Restoration Plan. And I reached out to Dean Johnson like he wanted me to, and he said yes, as, as long as Peg does it with him. So, then I reached out to her and she said yes as well, so...
That'd be a pretty good team anyway.
That's what he said. He goes, I kinda need Peg, she does the computer stuff for me. So, um, they both agreed. Yeah. I prepared the notice of appointment. I looked at the last one though, it looks like you guys just made a motion to appoint those two. And then I went ahead and, and created a notice of appointment, said, you wanna do that and make a motion to appoint the two of them? I'll get the paperwork.
Now, this is on, um...
This is that one with Chip Corsi.
Okay.
Yeah, where they have that money to spend on projects in the basin. And those two would be on the citizen review panel, representing Benewick County, on the cit, as cit, for citizen review.
That's the one that's got the hangman's quick.
Yeah, they wanna spend money on a hangman's quick to mitigate environmental damage and silver up and get the...
Not a good deal.
How's that gonna be here on the eighth, is that without emails? Yes.
Well, maybe they can get some road gravel out, bridge or something.
Yeah.
Well, I move we appoint Peg and Dean to the basin restoration advisor panel.
So... Motion carries. Fernwood Water and Sewer Fund?
And as Mariah was saying, they will be here on April eighth, not Peg and Dean, the, the Corning Restoration Team. Their team will be here. Okay, and let's see.
Fernwood Water and Sewer?
They are, sent us a payment request that I submit to their, to their grant administrator, ICDVG. And it's for twelve thousand seven eighty-two. And I need Jack to sign it. I think there's two faces.
It's been a while. Want their sewer system up there the last several years, haven't they?
Oh, man.
They've been, yeah, they've been working on it.
Yeah.
But I think they're getting it done, I think they're taking a portion of it.
You can't, you can't really crawl over it though.
Yeah. She might get done with one project and they're third one.
That's exactly what they've been doing.
And that's DQ?
Yeah. You need a motion on that too, don't you?
Um, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna make a motion about this in your district? Yeah, you wanna make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Golf course?
No, fair housing.
No, fair housing.
So, you guys actually...
I'm thinking of the golf course is what I'm...
You guys actually approved this last time, but I didn't have the proclamation made up and now I do, so... Thank you.
Fair housing.
Okay, now golf course.
Okay.
So, Mariah went ahead and prepared the annual contract and I think they didn't, Mendel House did not ask for any changes. So, I think we just updated the dates and...
What does the contractor do out there if we take care of the maintenance and stuff?
The contractor? You mean, well, they run the, the lower part of it, don't they, Dean?
Golf, the golf course.
The golf.
The golf course, yes.
Yeah, the golf course part. The rest runs up above.
Yes.
But we, we provide the mowing and the maintenance and stuff to the golf course?
Yes.
Yes, and they do the, collect the fees and run the Osiris. So, do they sell stuff at the bottom or do they?
They do, I think they have a little portion up there with, um...
Sell golf balls?
Golf balls, golf tees, I'm not sure what all. It's not like in that front part of, the first page of the contract, it says what they do and what they don't do.
I guess I was wondering if we're taking care of the maintenance and the mowing and stuff, why would you get a contractor?
Someone has to be there to, to run the course, take, you know, let people that want to play golf. Someone has to be there to run the course, take, you know, let people that want to play golf and stuff like that. Someone just be, just be there, plus they mow the lawn and everything, too, so.
Do we take in enough fees to pay for the contractor?
Some days, some, some years ago, the golf course pays for itself, some years, we go, last year we were behind because we had a whole bunch of maintenance on our mowing and stuff.
You've had a horse you don't ride and you still feed it, don't you?
I've got two of them.
That's what we're into on that.
So we.
We need to agree on that, don't we? Hi, Jeff.
How you doing?
Good, good.
What time does everything open up around here?
Around here?
Nine o'clock.
Well, in here.
Oh, in the, in here?
I want to go to extension office, where's that at?
Downstairs.
If there's nobody there, probably.
They open at nine, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to, sign that agreement?
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
I'm getting worried, so you're in the sewer and golf business, I don't know.
Got a conference call, this should be the last one.
Yes, yes, so I just got an email from Seth this morning saying that it should be wrapping up. Yeah.
Have they accomplished anything?
Don't everybody jump up?
So he gave you.
Have you, on, number ten, have you got that, have you worked on that?
So, yes, I mean, I think there's a couple of different alternatives. Based on the equipment that's being purchased, it's a unique piece of equipment. Just need to document why that's unique to the county, and there's a couple of different alternatives. Mission or short, I sent those to you specifically.
I agree, I agree, alternative two sounds like what we want to do.
So if you approve the purchase today, we can publish in the newspaper one time that we are purchasing as a sole source. Because it's a unique piece of machinery, we can't really put it out to bid. And it would be unreasonable, disadvantageous, or impractical under the circumstances to try to bid out a piece of equipment like that. And so we publish that one time in the newspaper during the fourteen day period, and then we can finalize the purchase. But you can approve that today.
Give me a motion.
I move we approve the purchase of the greater.
I'll second it. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, here's a nice one, Loody building discussion.
So the agent's office, Gail hasn't come up and talked to me about it, we just, I didn't know where we were at, so.
So, have we ever come up what it's gonna cost us?
I have tried, and I just can't, I can't foresee, I don't have any comparable building to even estimate.
What's your answer out of pocket to, over what we're doing downstairs? Five hundred, two hundred?
A month?
Yeah.
I would say it's probably gonna run more like a thousand a month.
A thousand a month.
That's, yeah. With the increased electric bill, the janitor service.
So where's that gonna come from?
Supplies. So I have a county building fund. I usually have money left over in that.
So we could fund it out of?
So I could fund it out of our county building fund. For this year, and then for next year.
But my three years come out pretty soon, so.
And then for the next budget year, we could, you know, put it in her budget, so we, we track that directly out of her budget. Or keep it in county building, however you guys want to do that.
So we can fund it for a year?
Yeah, half a year.
For what they're trying to do, I think it'd be a pretty decent move. Gail actually wrote out a, because the people are gonna be there, but she's not in the office yet, for me to pick it up this morning. Discuss this a little bit later after we get that list. Loody Building sat there for, they're since I've been, Commissioner FD. Give free up some space in this building for some things, too, that we, everybody's complaining about being out of space here, so.
Would we utilize it?
Well, I would request that we hold off on that, just in case we decide things, you know, I hate to say don't work out up there, but I wouldn't want to fill that up immediately.
No.
Just in case.
Right.
But you're right, we absolutely could fill that up.
Yeah.
Very quickly with the overflow from other offices. But I would suggest we hold off, just in case.
And it meets their EDA accessible requirements that she always complains about. Get some traffic out of here over there. She's got that grant for the next several years to fund those programs that need space to actually, actually utilize the program, so. No issues here to explain a little more. It was about two, three weeks ago, I talked to her, maybe a month ago now, it's been about a while.
Yeah, that's what I noticed, too, it's like, oh, it's been a while since we talked about it, so, again, she didn't come up and ask me, I just threw it on there.
Well, we gotta make a decision if we want to do that, that's, you know.
And I kind of foresee some repair bills, right, to start with, with plumbing and electricity, just because, like I said, it's been sitting empty. And I just have a feeling there'll be some issues once those bathrooms start getting used full time and.
Plus, it'd be ideal to take out part of that month wall, so that have, the way she explained it may be a little bit, that way the, way that runs off or sits in there.
Oh, right, can see.
Could monitor the four H networks that are working with those projects they have going on right there, which is have a wall between them.
Right.
It's, it's gonna need paint to stain this year, should have been done last year.
Yeah.
On the outside.
On the outside, you're talking, yeah.
Should be.
I think we talked about that, too.
So it's up to you guys.
I move we move forward with moving over there.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. March twenty-eighth, Mendon Health District, you're gonna be gone, aren't you, or are you?
Yeah, I'll be out of here.
Yeah, okay. Dee, you might ask somebody in the health department if they've got anybody, an issue with the other counties, that's the only.
An issue, like with the tenants, or?
With, with financing, we have to go in the past with that because we, Cootney tries to roll ahead, so. But I, they may be fine. We don't need to go if they are.
Okay, and I don't think this is that meeting.
No, this is just their monthly meeting.
This is just their monthly, not their budget meeting.
Okay.
The budget meeting comes up in May is when that.
Yeah, it's coming up, but this is just their, yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it matters if we don't go to this one.
Thirteen?
We have, this is Phil's district. Tennis Chuck, Track Three, property address three eighty, Peaceful Valley Lane and Plummer. And Jason Robinson is requesting that the county add it to the next land sale list. So it's one that the county owns, but we've never had it out to public auction, so he's requesting that we do that. I talked to Donna on Friday, she said stuff over there is going for about forty-four hundred dollars an acre. That's her market value that she puts on, on that. So that, and it's five point six, so that would make it twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty.
So we'll just wait till we have an auction and put it?
Yeah, but Sarah needs your guys' approval to add it to her auction, so if you guys are open to that. Actually, Donna said, ask Phil about the location and if there's any view at three eighty Peaceful Valley.
I think it sits in the hole.
Okay.
Because Peaceful Valley, Valley Lane goes off Benewah Road.
Okay, she didn't think it did, but she said if it has a view or a view of water, she values it a little differently. But she didn't think it did, but wanted to make a double check.
She bring them out to work to tell you if there's a creek on that, creek with the path anyway.
No, she would have, that's what she said, it doesn't have a view of water, but she didn't know if it was, you know.
We'll decide the minimum when we put it on.
Exactly, we don't need to decide that now, but she said if we decide it's more than that, she can certainly change it. But market value in that area is forty-four hundred an acre.
Yeah.
So, okay, motion to.
Put it on the list?
Put it on, just to put it on the list, not to sell it, yeah.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Volunteer Day, fourteen?
Oh, yes, again, you guys approved that last time, I just didn't have the paperwork ready, I do now.
Any ambulance grant?
Oh, yes, so she was, she applied for a grant and she wanted a letter of support from the county, and she needed it Friday. So I just went ahead, we reviewed, we did one in twenty sixteen. We just updated the dates and resubmitted it because they're going for a grant for another ambulance. So I went ahead and did one and said, the Board of County Commissioners supported it, and I signed it as clerk to you guys. But I wanted to make sure I could rescind it if you guys are not in favor of that, okay.
You don't, you don't need a motion, do you? Or would you? When you signed it?
I did put.
It's already sent.
It's already sent, as long as you guys are okay.
The motion would be approving.
Okay.
The clerk's action.
Okay, give me a motion. Any discussion?
How much, how many dollars to get that?
How much, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You know, the thing on that ambulance, so I wonder if they're looking at what, what we're facing with this helicopter situation. One of these ambulances is gonna be really upgraded.
More refinements of helicopter.
Well, you know what they're charging us? Eighteen to twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars from here to Corlaine. And, and the CEO of the hospital is really upset over that. So I wonder, you might ask them?
Okay.
What, I'm sure this thing will be tough, but I, we need to make sure.
And what am I asking her, like, how it's gonna be equipped, or?
If.
Sufficient to transport patients?
Yeah, if it's really upgraded to, and maybe that's, some of that might be, I know some of it's staff that has to go with it.
I think it's a staff concern, Commissioner.
But is it?
Sometimes they have to have a nurse go along with the ambulance.
Yeah, they do.
Or have a, or have a paramedic that can do advanced life support type things.
Boy, that's really serious, because I tell you, that's killing, killing us. And they don't pay anything, ambulance don't pay anything to light up here to do anything.
We do have it worked out now that the nurse is doing the ride along if it's, if it's critical. Instead of sending an ambulance over from Corlaine, they are sending an ambulance from here with a nurse in it. But they're only doing that in extreme emergencies, and it's what's life flight, it's not available. So it's not, they're not doing it to take place of life flight yet, but they do have, they're starting on that process.
But they need to be looking at that. You know, example, had one of my guys in Fernwood choke him the other day, and they flew him over there. And I would have done it, but it cost eighteen thousand dollars to fly him to Corlaine. And, you know, and that might be a critical thing that you had to do, but, you know.
And we have that paramedic intercepts with Cootney Health or the Cootney Ambulance Service. And we get deemed for that every now and then. But it'd be great if they could do the paramedic from here, straight, straight to the, either Spokane or Corlaine, or wherever they need to go.
Right, so my understanding that they're doing that now in really limited circumstances, but it's only when the helicopter can't fly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the hospital's providing some additional staffing for that, a nurse ride along.
Yeah, we need to push on that.
Does St. Mary's just supply basic life support, or do they go with any advanced, like, paramedic or?
Well, they.
They might have ALS, they don't have paramedic.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, me and I was in there, they have to train a special nurse on that. And I, I.
Well, a paramedic is a higher level of training.
Yeah, but I think that's something that we kind of ought to push a little bit on, because that's very critical. You know, there's times you can't fly, you know.
And that's what the Cootney, Cootney ambulance does when they come down here with those paramedic intercepts. They, they take off, then they meet them halfway and switch it off, and then we get deemed for how much that costs us, three, four hundred dollars each time.
When, when, you remember this off the record, but when Bud cut his hand off with the deal at Fernwood. They brought him in, and he was laying on the table, and of course, I, they called me and I run out there, and he said, cover this up, Jack will pass out on. But in a way, they were gonna send him to Corlaine, and I said, no, you're not, just send him to Harvard. He was an hour from the time we called till he was on the operating table in, in Seattle. They come in and got him in a jet and took him over, and saved his hand. And when my son got his leg cut off with a cell floater, the same, same thing. And it's, you know, it's critical to have this airport open to be able to get them in there. But it's also critical to have staff on scene that can take them to Corlaine, too, or Spokane. So, you know. But she said she was working on it, so maybe she had a, and that's a factor of the hospital.
I believe they are, I know at least that first, you know, step they have gotten that accomplished, which was a big, a big step. It's not meant to be, but that was a pretty big step to accomplish.
The St. Mary's ambulance, do they, their coverage area in Benewah also, or?
Yes. You know, I, I think that law wise, I think they have to cover wherever they're called to. Look at the, they go up to Joel all the time, and that's not, that's out of our territory, the Joel, Claritia, all that's all out of our territory. But I think they go.
Well, each ambulance company has a designated.
Yeah, I, they are, but they, you know, we had a little problem that Worley was coming to Rocky Point and picking up patients, and we at one time got a little upset about that, because we thought maybe ours could come from there to St. Mary's. And that's what they were doing, but I think that's, I don't think you have a friction in the ambulance system that we have, so. I think they'll go wherever they have to.
Yeah, I know, and Fernwood either from here.
Yeah.
Fernwood.
Yeah.
Well, the only trouble with that is when they go out of county, and we get a no pay, then the county gets stuck with the bill.
Yeah.
That's when we need to make sure that with Shaw County that they pick up the tab, like. Cootney County comes down here with their. CUNY County comes down here with their, uh, paramedic intercepts.
We pay.
That we, they bill us directly, then if we get paid by them, by the person, then they're not, not out. That's the most thing they talk to with, with, uh, Shoshone County.
They, animal damage controlable, but.
So they've sent their annual request, um, their request is fifty-five hundred. We've been paying them thirty-five hundred since about two thousand and four, I think it was three thousand before then.
They want fifty-five?
Yeah.
And we're paying them thirty-five?
Yes.
And then they took their sixteen animals, well seventeen, count the one pup. I realize it's a needed, needed deal, I guess, but it's not that expensive per animal.
Yeah, it is, it is. I think we leave it like it is.
Can we write my? I think they were.
Well, the state deemed us pretty bad when they bought that, uh, fifteen thousand acres that you counted the last two years, so.
I don't think that has anything to do with the land department, animal control, but anyway.
Has, has something with our ability to pay bills.
Yeah, it does. So in other words, I'm not gonna get a motion out of you on that.
Not for fifty-five hundred.
No, no, same as it was last year.
Okay, that goes to about two hundred and five dollars an animal, I guess. If you look at it like that, that's a thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of you guys is gonna give it.
All making a motion, say thirty-five hundred or something.
What it was, whatever it was, thirty-five.
I'll say that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Slaughterhouse-Briggs project update. What are you really gonna build a roof? Should've built it last year, it's, I think, twenty-one.
I think that's what he said, yeah.
They're two culverts.
Two giant culverts.
But it's, we, we reinforced the end, so.
It's usable now?
Yeah, yeah.
We got an email from Dan Kuns at LTAC just wanting to give us an update that the concept report was approved. Um, and they have asked TO to submit a scope of work for the remainder of the work. And he just wanted to make sure that, um, also it's anticipated that the next contract would be between two hundred, four hundred thousand to complete. And the county share of that would be at the upper end of three hundred thousand, uh, three hundred, thirty thousand.
Ooh, gee, you're pretty nice.
Yeah, so for this next set, before construction, but, and I just wanted to let you guys know I'd already set aside that thirty thousand in our reserve trust, so we have it. But again, then we'll need to set aside more for during construction too for our share, which I have built into the budget already, so.
Okay. RV park grant application?
Yeah, so I noticed Alex, he's already in, did he talk about that or was it just, okay. So he just wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with him moving forward on the grant for that RV park? So the grant would actually have to come in, you know, the county's name?
So when, I, do I don't have no locations, nothing to do?
I think the first part, so I think it's gonna be like a three-year, three-tiered grant. And the first year he would request funds for the, for the location. And I think that's what, how he's writing it, um, again, pieces of property come and go way before a grant would be, we'd have money from the grant, so I think he's just gonna write it up as like a sample. Like if we want a waterfront piece of property, this is how much we would need theoretically. And then, so then let's say we got it, then he purchased that piece of property, then he would write the next year's grant for, um, developing that property. I think, and I'm not sure what the third year portion he said would be.
So who's gonna own the park then?
So the county would own it and then his, his idea is to contract it out. I guess similar to what we do at the golf course, someone to run it. So we'd be proud of our son in the RV park.
I don't know where he's gonna get it, put it though.
Yeah, I don't know that he.
He told me he had a couple of sites in mind, he didn't wanna talk about it until I got, so the word didn't get out on him.
And he, and he told me that same thing, I have a couple parcels in mind, but who knows if they'll still be available by the time we get the grant ready.
I don't think it's anything to go ahead with the grant, but.
I don't, yeah, till we get a little closer, no worries.
Yeah, we can't do anything unless you start it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys are okay with him moving forward?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion on that? I mean, I think I heard one, but making sure you're good on that.
I'm thinking.
I'll say the bottom.
Sure, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nineteen, five-year action plan meeting, ten ofly. I don't know when that's gonna be. I don't, kinda need to get with Shoshone County on that. And I don't know where their team is at on that.
Oh.
We just have not talked to them about it, so.
Well, I, right, that five-year action plan, I, it's been a while since I've even heard about it. But again, they, so it looks like they're shooting for May thirtieth. At first, when they first emailed me, he had like three tentative dates, I wanna say the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth, or the thirtieth. And by Friday, it looks like they landed on the thirtieth at the supervisor's office in Cortlande. For the five-year action plan meeting.
And I'm on that, and, yeah, me.
I think you are.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause the, the email was from Matt Davis over here asking if he would be available, like I said, but I.
Yeah.
By the time Friday rolled around, they had landed on the thirtieth and so I said I'd let you know.
You know, the only thing on that, we need to work with Matt on that. As far as working with the new supervisor, she's green as grass.
Okay.
I mean, she has no, no knowledge of what's really going on, so she's gonna be the key, so.
So if you get your ducks in a row before you go up to that meeting with what Matt would like in this district, that would help.
That's exactly right. So.
Okay.
Remind me.
Okay. Tina just messaged me, I'm gonna call her.
There might be something you wanna put, uh, log on with you there, Jack.
Yeah.
I heard you have something about log in. And the force service just gotta start shit in September.
They're, they're, uh, they're much better than they were.
Oh, yeah.
Got an accident of about, I think in twentieth, ninety-five million. Nothing like the state's doing, but they're, that's better than they were when they were doing nothing. Twenty?
Hang on one second, Tina called him.
I looked that up on the maps, where, where are they including Benwell County in that renter flats thing?
We were involved in, we've been involved in, that's, the team has been involved in that.
There's none but our county.
Yeah, but it comes to our county, that's, that's, that's where the object is. You know, they got ninety-nine percent of the timber in, in Shoshone, but, uh, they got no, they got, and no industry at all.
Okay, all right.
So that's, that's why.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was, I saw, was reading that and D D's down there and I got my map on it and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. What are you doing these?
Okay, well Tina said call right now, so I, I don't know what's up, she knows I'm in a meeting, so. Hello? What's happening? Okay. All right. Okay. 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 Thank you. I don't either. Okay, thanks. Bye. Apparently my whole office is out with the flu.
Your whole office?
My whole office, so it's not open. So that's what she called me in a panic, she's over at the hospital with the flu, I think Lynn has the flu, and actually Michelle was on spring break, so sorry about the disruption.
No, that's not a problem.
Maybe I'll just go put a note on the door.
Might, might not be bad.
I don't know.
No, I got eleven guys out Friday.
Yeah.
Eleven.
Oh, so, sorry I distracted, I, oh.
I think last week, before Tico's school, because we all shut down because of so many kids, kids and teachers out.
Just put a boost app?
Dawn, maybe she'll open it to the team and have maybe the report on it, but it's me reporting on it and I really don't know that much about the project.
Just give it.
Give it to Dean Stone, okay. I will do that and see if he has, can fill in any gaps on that.
You don't have anything on water, if you guys should be.
No.
Okay. Why don't we go to, uh, Lynn ain't gonna be here, so that's.
Lynn's not here.
Oh, uh. Let's go with Sheriff's Office.
Okay, since they're here.
We can.
Those are more pictures. George isn't changed up there.
Yeah, maybe for the matches, if you wanna. So now.
You got the food, yeah. Jack, you got the food?
All of them, I mean, all of them. So the last six years we've been doing the lease program and I've been trying to get away from the lease program. So the last couple years, we haven't been able to purchase a vehicle, so we get those leases paid off. Last few months, I've been trying to get bids and quotes on other vehicles. So I come to the Dodge Naringo, which is almost ten thousand dollars cheaper per vehicle than Ford and Chevys. And I like to purchase two of them this year and I fall eight thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars short to purchase them two.
Why do you want to get rid of each program?
Pardon me?
Why do you want to get rid of each program?
Commissioner's office?
Because at the time with the budget, we was only able to have, I think, three vehicles leased for the four years. And we got approximately ten vehicles I believe replaced.
I do believe that too.
Five hundred and two hundred thousand miles.
The office?
So if we go over one vehicle a year, we'll never get those swapped out. So I'm hoping to get, purchase two vehicles a year. So here in eight years, we'll go get all the vehicles swapped out and start that over.
Um, there is, but they only, we, they only just opened that night. Yes.
So you're looking at Dodge Naringo's then?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
They're, they're thirty thousand compared to Chevy or Ford, they're up to thirty-eight to forty thousand. And the Dodge Naringo that I'm looking at is lease rated for the pursuit.
Okay. What do they put in their front or is it heavy or?
It's, I'm going with the three point seven, clear. So it's the V-six. It's gonna be a little better on the mileage on fuel.
Have enough power to get around it?
Pardon me?
Have enough power to get around it?
Yes.
Where's your prices at, Tony?
Um, with, for the GMs, I talked to a, I got a lot of Paul Latch, that she's a GM, I forgot her title. So I got the specs I wanted for her vehicle, she sent that out to all the GM dealers in Idaho, um, Washington, I think, Oregon. And they were giving me quotes as they were coming in. And they were still up there at thirty-eight to forty thousand.
Where's the Dodge come from?
Um, Gibson. So I was trying to keep it somewhat local. If we have any warranty issues or, um, any recalls, it's much easier for us to take to the shop.
Do, or you don't have any recall to do that?
Where do you think the dealer?
Is there a price sheet in here for your vehicles?
For the others, I did not, I did not add the Chevys or anything.
Okay.
So I just done the, the letterhead up for the sheriff. Um, I know he's supposed to be here to present it, but he's over in Cortlande talking to lawyers, so.
Yeah, I met him on the road ahead.
So the reason I am going with the Dodge is because it does save the kind of taxpayers money for them to have to purchase the forty thousand dollar vehicle. And on top of that, I am trying to purchase two of them.
How's your Ford sale up so far?
Pardon me?
How's your Ford sale up, how's these getting close?
Decent, I haven't had no problems with mine, I got a fifty-seven thousand on mine. But, uh, of course I spend most of my time to drive back over to Boise and, and the office there, so. Mogar's, the second deputy's got it and it's, it's been a decent vehicle. But from when we purchased those vehicles to what they are now, they went up in price about eight thousand dollars. And they're not changing anything from.
Yeah, they first one was a twenty-eight thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar lease, if I remember.
Yeah, that was purchase price too. But now they're up to thirty-eight thousand. And I'm a Chevy fan and I like Talos, we're having really good luck with the, the three Talos we have now.
Yeah.
But the forty thousand dollars, I can't justify that. Because on top of that, to equip them with all the law enforcement stuff, we're in at another ten to twelve thousand dollars.
So what are you asking us to do?
I'm asking for an additional eight thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. On top of what I do have for your capital budget.
The sheriff might.
The other question?
I'm gonna take another advisement to get back to him. If you don't get by today anyway.
No.
No, we're.
Over for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So moving on to the jail staff foreboding, that's what Todd is here to talk to you guys about.
So ICRAP has offered to pay half price for the base cost of an inmate tracking system, which adds on to our current system. And what it does is you take down the subblock with, you have, you have tags on each of the cells. So everything you do down the subblock is real-time tracking instead of us remembering to log it later, so everything's backlog. It'll lower our lawsuits, uh, in the jail, the risk of lawsuits in the jail by making everything real-time instead of backlogging everything. So the price that we were quoted at through Guardian is sixteen thousand. But ICRAP's gonna be paying half of that through their program we've got going on, so it would be about eight thousand. And then the yearly cost after that would be three thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
They work. They work. Yeah, I know. I'm fully involved in. They really work. We've had about four or five bad lawsuits. I think that's a good system. It really is.
We just did a demo through them a month ago or so.
Yeah.
Be really nice to get that.
Yeah.
So. It, it tracks real-time and what, what you doing with the prisoners and is that correct?
What's that?
Say again what it does?
So currently, the system that we have, if we do, let's, like a jail check or something, we walk down the subblock, make sure everything's alright. Well, we can't log that until we get back, so if we get busy in the middle of it, we're backlogging that jail check for like. Say we did it at nine-thirty, but we got busy doing something else, we don't get back to a computer until ten. Now we're logging it for nine-thirty, but it's ten o'clock now. So if you go back through the logs, it's showing that we logged a jail check for nine-thirty, but.
We have a little. App on smartphone or something.
So pretty much the, what the system is, pretty much smartphone. Each cell and everything has a tag on it that they install, so when you go down to do your jail check, you swipe it.
Oh, okay.
Scan that tag, and it automatically logs it into your system for you, so you don't have to wait to go back to a computer to do it.
What's the cost, our half?
Uh, eight thousand. Yep, friend cost. About eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It's a good deal, Phil.
Okay.
Really is. It's a backup, is what it is. Especially in small jails, like what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Well, even, even a large jail, jail makes.
Yes.
Makes a lot of sense. How long to take to implement, implement that?
Um, I haven't talked to about that, cuz they, they come up and they install it, and they have to do training as well. So I would say it's like a month or two before it's fully, we're on our own with it.
And a yearly cost is how much?
Three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
What's that cost for?
For the licensing fees for the software.
It's really good, yeah.
But it's, uh, it'll help you insurance-wise.
Okay.
I would give you a case, where you could do that for quite a few years for what it costs us. It's a deaf case.
Well, by same time, I was gonna say, well, time for you guys to put it on.
We'd hand down.
Kind of move back to the situation, we have everything in the computer too. Will we have any room in your budget next year for the software maintenance fee on, or the?
Take it off the cars next year.
We're up to almost twenty thousand bucks right now, I guess.
We down here crying, baby.
So Tyler.
Yes.
Is, does the eight thousand, whatever you said, eight, eight three seventy-five, does that cover our first year's annual subscription or whatever? So would it be an additional?
Right.
Thirty-one ninety for fiscal year twenty nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
And you think we have no room in your budget right now then?
Not for the upfront cost, the three thousand a year.
I don't think I can.
Might cover up my.
Is it upper taxes or some?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll say that.
Any more discussing? All in favor, say aye. Alright, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chairman. I was wondering, why can't you just buy that outright? I mean, it's software, is it better than anything? Just the thought on the jail.
I'm sure they look at that.
They probably do like more software, they have upgraded it at least once a year.
Oh, yeah, that's a thing.
The camera level coming back in, or not?
Should be. Who knows, maybe it'll scare. I call it this mercy, it doesn't.
Did you have, did we ever change it?
Yeah.
Or is it just, oh, we just haven't changed it from the type change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make you have a good time.
Um, so we can do it, right, it is nine, nineteen?
Nineteen.
So we can do a call, a public comment?
Yeah, okay. Any public comment?
Nothing exciting for us, Rachel?
Nope, I want to know what you're doing with Forest Service and maybe get something going on that, that's all, thank you.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, so spring cleaning and summer's coming up with the dumpsters, and I was just wondering if there's any updates on. Waste management and how that's going. Towards contract and just improving dumpster conditions and.
None? We discuss it, but we haven't come up with a solution.
Santa Y was pretty gross this morning, so we.
Yeah.
Thought we'd kinda mention.
Very bad, very bad.
Were they hungry then, done things on the ground all winter, now the snow's melting, and it's, it's pretty, pretty sick over there too.
That's the same thing.
I did see Derek Cooper around last weekend with a rake, when he was picking the garbage up, raking up around the dumpsters and trying, trying to clean them up. If you feel there, Jack.
Yeah.
We know that they're gonna start running over big ones. Yeah, but that's a valid point, dumpsters, something we need to address for long-term solutions to. Ends up this hassle garbage, and we discussed that a few times, so. And right now, we're working on a new contract with our solid waste, gotta fix it up. It's, it's a pretty expensive part of our whole county operations. It's, it's a challenge, really is. Because you throw in the three cities, plus the tribe, plus, uh, new construction, pretty soon. We have a lot of solid waste headed to Missoula every weekend. And that's a, that's a.
We're gonna, uh, rig up a flatbed with a, with a self-loader, a small self-loader on it. So go by and pick up the davenport's and the refrigerators and all that stuff. They can't get it into the dumpsters or into the trucks, you know, and we're gonna build that.
That'll keep it a lot cleaner, that's on the.
We can't, I'm looking for, looking for a little self-loader, I think they might have found it, you know, on the little truck. And then anybody can grab it and go pick them up then, so. You know, we really fell on the sword on this, and. And, you know, the guy done really a good job, ended up in divorce. And hasn't done a good job since then. Drank pretty heavy and having lots of problems. Being kinda weak on that stuff, uh, kind of let, kind of fell on the sword on it, really, so.
But we have been discussing it, pretty fair on what to do.
Yeah, it, it is frustrating to, to see the conditions out there, like with the refrigerators and stuff laying off to the side of the dumpsters and stuff. Those people, they, they're putting them on a truck or on a trailer.
Yeah.
They, they can haul it up to the landfill, fill it themselves, and not be so lazy and dump them off on the.
Absolutely, you're one hundred percent right.
It, it is better than over the banks somewhere along the road.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think a good idea on that might have, why don't you have the newspaper do some kind of article on that? And say, hey, do they know you can just get, they're not gonna even charge you to take it up there?
Yeah, they know that, but I, it's quicker to.
Okay.
But I don't, they might, they might put it in there, so.
The St. Mary's River Road looks great. That keep, they did something, big signs all over it, no wood, no metal, spray painted on the dumpsters, and it looks good every time I go by. So that one's good.
Should we get accessories and treasures?
Neither one of them are here.
Neither one of them.
We're falling like flies.
Boy, you're, you, you got a great agenda for us today, Dean.
I do. Um, Lynn did give me her paperwork, so I can, we can go back to nine o'clock and, um. Review that if you guys want.
Alright, let's do it.
So she had. These SHSP grants that she works with Jay Baker on, um, to the, to the entities around here. You know, the emergency, you know? And. Part of that says that she needs to, you know, present them to the board and make sure you're okay with her dispersment of the allotment, pardon?
Where are we getting that?
Um, no, she applies for it, then we get it, then we disperse it to those agencies. And again, she just needs your, your review, and if you have any comments, let her know, um, but that's. That's where she's at right now, is, um, like that cover letter is how, how, how it'll be dispersed or allocated.
Are you guys on that?
On that pager system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we just put eight thousand dollars in to get hooked up to the secondary system. They work really good out in our area, but the pagers, some, some lits in the system, like the guys working a few that are in town, the pagers won't work down here, but they work fine out there.
Telephone works down here, though.
But I think this thing that they're working on here will make the pagers work down here for them. So who gets the fifteen new radios?
Does it not say? I'm looking online, so I gave you guys one of my copies, um. Saint, oh, do you mean out, like, I'm assuming all their EMTs, so St. Mary's Ambulance is request, is requesting the fifteen new radios for their EMTs that they have on call.
Oh, okay. St. Mary's Ambulance, yeah.
And again, yeah, the next one, coroner, two mobile radios, I think one for him, one for his daughter Carrie.
Yeah, as I read that, she's got enough money, grant money to fund all of the requests with a little bit left over.
That's the way I understood it too, yes. Again, just, I think, wanting to make sure you guys are okay with the, um, allocation of the. Or if you guys have any additional input.
How's that countywide pager system supposed to work? What's that, Phil? That countywide pager system, I'm not sure. Or. To the pager? Yeah. Well, right now, we have, they come out of the sheriff's office, so they're not gonna call any pagers. Okay, call comes through, yeah, upper pagers.
So what I think I heard Tony talking to Lynn on Friday about that, it, it's actually an upgrade, um. Like an optional module to the system that the dispatchers already use over in the, and it's, um.